... allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Polika.
Here.
Piana.
Here.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, here. Everyone who's here this evening. The next item of business would be the approval of the agenda. What's council's pleasure on the agenda tonight?
I'd like to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Piana in her nose. Any discussion on the agenda? Marnie, would you call the roll?
Councilmembers Lennon.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Polika.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. We have two presentations this evening, possibly a third one. I see Cindy in the back. Do we have a DDA presentation? Nope, just hanging out with us tonight? Awesome. All right, then we have two presentations this evening. The first one is Ferndale Public Schools, and we have our school superintendent Blake Pruitt here with us this evening. Good evening, sir. Always good to see you.
Same here. Thank you for having me. Do we need this one on for recordings?
Um, I think so.
Okay, going back to my sound system days. So, we have a couple of things going on for Ferndale Public Schools. Wanted to take the opportunity to educate the community and educate the council. So, this is a little bit of our opening day information, as well as some things that are going on with our millage that's coming up on November 3rd. So, this picture was from the high school at about 5:00 a.m. Don't ask me why it was there at 5:00 a.m., but it was there at 5:00 a.m. And this was a great picture to kind of start the year and starting a new day, starting a new year. Every time you start a new year in a school district, you're always looking forward. You know, what is this year going to bring and what are you preparing for? So, this was in Detroit News. This is about our early college program, which you'll be hearing a little bit about later. Our five years of high school that students can earn their own associate's degree, which we're doing in combination with the city and the police department here. This is one of our students from University High School getting her ID taken at Baker College. We sold our Jefferson Center. With that money goes back into the school district and into the bond to be able to maintain the rest of our buildings within the district. Our first robotics team won districts and went to states and then went to nationals. First time our team ever went to nationals. So, did a great job last year.
That's great.
Ferndale Schools opened its doors to our Montessori program at Roosevelt Elementary. And there's an article in the Michigan Montessori Society catalog or magazine. So, what are some of the things that we're excited about this year in Ferndale Schools? We have our new early childhood center at the Harding Building. This is the largest our preschool has ever been in the history of Ferndale. We have filled every classroom in that building. I will tell you, it is so much fun to go back there and see the space where we used to hold board meetings and have slides and toys. I would prefer the slides and toys when we had board meetings, but they weren't there. To see all the old offices turned into classrooms, which was their original intent, and it's just bustling. We have a waitlist at this point for our preschool program. And so, anyone out there in the community that hears this, if you would like preschool, if we get enough people on the waitlist, we'll try and open another classroom. We have our Ferndale Open Classroom. Next year, as we move to our K-235, Open Classroom becomes district-wide. All those great things of project-based learning, volunteerism, all those outdoor education, all those different pieces go district-wide next year. So, every student gets to have that benefit. We've started a STEM program, Science, Technology, Engineering, Mathematics, called Project Lead the Way. That's at Ferndale Middle School for all our 7th and 8th graders. It is a national program that was started out of Rochester Institute of Technology. It's in partnership with Lawrence Tech and Eastern Michigan University. So, we are one of the only school districts in the area that offers a STEM or engineering-related course in middle school. We've started our Cambridge International Program. We are the first school in the state of Michigan to do our Cambridge International. It is very, very widely known across the world. When you look at East Coast, West Coast, you will see school districts all over that have Cambridge. It's very well-known. We are the first in this area. We want to be innovative, want to be forward-thinking. We'll actually have our teachers, myself, administrators, helping Cambridge do a conference, I think, November 11th. We'll be doing a parent night with one of the leaders of Cambridge from England. We'll be doing a parent night, I believe, November 10th at Ferndale High School. So, this is a program that they're looking for Ferndale to be its model school district so they can show how this is working in Michigan and take it out to other districts in Michigan. They'll also be looking at hopefully taking a group of our teachers either to Florida or Virginia. I'm hoping for Hawaii. That's where I'm voting for. But to take a group of our teachers to see where Cambridge has been for a long period of time and what great strides it's making for kids. In our new elementary model, the next year, 1617, Cambridge will also be K-5. So, we will have it K-8 by the time we get it completely rolled out. We started our Ferndale Secondary Honors Program last year. It's for students that want to have an upper level. It's not just classes, but it's some of those added extras or value-added that you get in college. If any of you were in an honors college, I'd like to say my son is. I was not. He takes after his mother, thank God.
Mike, you were.
Yeah. So, this is seminars. This is looking at scholarships. This will be a capstone project, like a senior thesis. So, we have, I would, I want to say about 120 students in 9th and 10th grade that are involved in the secondary honors program. We have offered a Advanced Placement International Diploma that students can take when they're doing AP classes. So, if they want to study internationally, they have the option to get the international diploma. And we have our Ferndale Early College with Baker College. And we've also started a new alternative ed program. As you know, we moved the alternative ed program out of TAF last year. The adult and alternative ed program are now housed in the Grant Building. We're doing this in collaboration with Berkeley Schools, which is now the Tri-County Educational Center. So, we have our former Ferndale students, some of the former Berkeley students, and revised the program so that it can be online, it can be seat time. So, it's a mix. So, so far, it's been a very successful start to the year. And then also our lower elementary Montessori program. So, something we have coming up, to be able to do all these programs, we have a non-homestead millage renewal. It is a renewal. It was in for 20 years. We're doing a 20-year renewal. As you know, in 1995, the state changed the way schools get funded. So, it is not funded by property taxes anymore. All those property taxes go to the state. The state in its infinite wisdom decides where it's going to go. And I hate saying this phrase, but a Ferndale student is worth $7,900. If they happen to live in a different zip code per se Birmingham or Bloomfield, they'd be worth $12,000. Again, the state in its infinite wisdom decided this. So, why a Ferndale student is less than a Birmingham or Bloomfield student is beyond me. But that's the system the state put forward. So, that 22 million comes from state funds, and that's per pupil. So, that's the amount of students that are in the district. So, if a student withdraws, that's $7,900 the student loses. If a student comes in, that's $7,900 the district gains. So, it is very much a numbers game with resident population, with school of choice. I will say this year, we are up. It looks like we will break our 10-year trend of declining enrollment, and our enrollment overall will be steady, which was a big part of our strategic plan as a school district, is to have a sustainable school district long-term. And even when you think of it five years ago, the school district had to rely on over 1,000 alternative ed students to make its budget. This year, 300. So, to be able to go from 1,000 to 300 and be able to make budget is huge. Our eventual long-term goal is that we don't have to rely on the alternative ed. That's just the service we provide. So, that, we're working towards that very quickly. The county funds, the federal funds have to do with special education and title and grant funds. And then the piece that comes from the community is the non-homestead millage. And that's 4.1 million, or 14% of our overall budget. This is on businesses and rentals, non-homestead properties. And this is a renewal. This is no new taxes. This is just a continuation of what we've been doing for 20 years. If we did not have that 4 million, I don't know how to cut 15% of the school budget and offer half of what we offer. So, it is, for lack of better term, a big deal to the school district. It is a significant amount of our budget. And our hope is, you know, this year, I know there are many different elections out there, that people across Ferndale and the Ferndale School District come out to Something that we've been trying to do is be better stewards of the money that the state and the community gives us. So, when I came on, we were the second lowest in instructional spending in the county of our school districts, only above Pontiac. We've risen that percentage of classroom spending in the last two years significantly, up by 6%. So, we are getting very close to the county average, which is where we want to be. In that same time, we've decreased our operational costs, our maintenance and operational costs by 24%. So, what we're trying to do is taking the limited funds that the state gives us and putting as much into the classroom as possible. And that's the overall goal of my administration and of the school board, is that we put as much money possible in front of students in the classroom. So, that's some of what we've been working on. And so, our cuts happen as far away from the classroom as possible. So, just some facts. This is not a new tax. If it's a homeowner, the passage of millage does not impact property taxes. If I own a business in Ferndale, it's just a continuation of the current millage, which has been in place for 20 years. If the millage wasn't there, there'd be 4 million of dollars we have to cut. And just to give you an idea, Roosevelt Elementary or JFK Elementary, their complete budget, facilities, everything, is 4 million for a building. So, how do I shut Roosevelt down, still educate all those students, yet I have none of the staff and none of the building? It's very impossible. That just gives you a scale of what that 4 million is. So, and these are just some pictures from the year, from our band camp up at Interlochen, our Jump Start Day at Roosevelt, and last year, our Education Excellence Award that we received from the state for University High School with Wayne State and their program there. So, this gives you just an overview of the school district and what's going on and what's coming up on November 3rd. So, any questions I can answer?
Questions of Blake.
Appreciate you coming out today. Thank you.
Yeah.
My pleasure. Thank you for having me.
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
You stated that the non-homestead millage is only for businesses and rental properties. As property values increase in Ferndale, a lot of rental properties are being converted to home-owned properties. How does that impact the school district then?
Um, I mean, in terms of those rentals becoming basically single-family residents again, I mean.
Owner-occupied, yeah.
Thank you, owner-occupied. In terms of how it affects the school district, because obviously that non-homestead tax would no longer exist for that property, you know, I don't have any studies or anything to say what that would be. So, it always could have an impact, but I.
It doesn't shift then to the remaining properties?
I would, my gut level is no. It's the first time I've been asked that question. It's a good question. I can easily get back to the council on that.
I'd be interested to know.
But I don't believe it does, because I don't believe that the taxes could increase because of that.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Thanks. Other questions of Blake? And you have a final, okay.
So, to preface the video that's coming up, as Superintendent Pruitt had discussed, we have an early college program that we're partnering with the city, or with the schools on. We have a short video that kind of explains what this program is all about. This all started with the conversation that the chief and I were having about the lack of diversity that is in our applicant pool for public safety positions. And it's actually a nationwide issue. And it just so happened that Chief Collins had visited Mr. Pruitt that week, and the next thing you know, they're having a conversation. And within about a month, this program started. So, we started, it started from a conversation, and it moved forward of how do we recruit kids at a much younger age and get them involved? We talked about like a junior academy or something of that nature. And like I said, if it weren't for that quick visit over to Mr. Pruitt and his quick action, we may be still talking about it, but instead, now we're actually doing it. And this is a great video to highlight how truly incredible this program can be moving forward.
I do think that the youth are disinterested in law enforcement. They seem to have.
I do think that the youth are disinterested in law enforcement. They seem to have a complete different picture as to what we do. I don't believe that they have a lot of exposure in law enforcement. I think that lacking that exposure and them only seeing what's on TV really influences how they see us.
The crisis is growing. The estimates are by 2020, 2/3 of the jobs in America are going to require a post-secondary credential. You know, as of this point in time, we're running about 40% of our adult population who have obtained an associate's degree or higher. The mission of Baker College is to provide quality higher education and training that enables graduates to be successful throughout challenging and rewarding careers. When I met with the president of Baker in Auburn Hills, we started kind of dreaming up what we wanted this to look like. So, we picked certain areas that we want students to get associates in emerging markets where we knew students should have a level of interest. At the same time, Police Chief Collins from Ferndale came to me and said that, you know, really looking for a way to engage students more within the police force and trying to get younger students involved, and especially a more diverse pool of candidates.
I think that's a nationwide deficiency that we see. We have a lesser number of minorities that are applying for these type of jobs.
They see videos of improper, excessive abuse, excessive force on the internet, and they think that that's all there is. And very rarely do they ever get to talk to us. The 3 million views of a cop doing something bad doesn't mean that that's 3 million cops doing one thing bad. It's an obstacle that we're fighting right now, and this is a perfect avenue to get over that obstacle.
Baker College is certainly excited to be part of the early college initiative with the Ferndale School District, as well as with the Ferndale Police Department. We've had over 50 students come on campus initially, which far exceeded our expectations for our first-year rollout. Students that are interested, the first pieces, talk to their counselor, talk to the administrators.
I think it's extremely important to really put kids into these kinds of programs early on, because you just don't know what you want to do in college. At this point, the school district is paying for this opportunity. So, why not test the waters before you get out into the real world?
This program uniquely combines not only the Ferndale Police Department and the Ferndale Public Schools and Baker College, but it also includes two of the three regional, and will probably have the third regional, police academy that will be involved in this program as well. Starting with a group of individuals, and we're taking them all the way through to the end of licensing for, or potential licensing as a, to be a police officer.
They get to see every different officer, what they do as their specialty. They get to learn and really, like I've said before, get exposure to different officers in this field. So, they'll be doing ride-alongs with different officers, and they'll be doing observations in court with different judges and magistrates that are going on.
That's what it's all about. Building relationships, that bond of trust with our citizens and our visitors.
We didn't invent this idea. We are taking many people's ideas and putting it into one. We certainly wouldn't go out there and say we're the first to try anything like this, but I think we're the first in this area. It's not a light-switch decision that will cure our problem tomorrow. But going forward, we see that within the scope of several years, that we have individuals that are interested in law enforcement at a very early age.
We want to work very closely with these students as they progress through their 11th grade year, their 12th grade year, and we really look forward to them coming on campus for their 13th year. If you want to finish your associates and then finish your bachelor's, that's great. You can do the medical program and then go directly into nursing, pre-med, biomedical engineering, then go get your MD. It's the start of the process.
There's a lot of opportunities you can take with a criminal justice degree, including the current kids that are in this program that I've talked to throughout this first month already. A lot of them want to go into law school, which of course just means that after they get their associate's degree in criminal justice through this program, they can continue on in a different school. There's probation officers. You can be a court clerk. You can be a judge at some point if that's what you're looking to do. Or you can come and join me in the police field to show them the different opportunities that criminal justice will give them.
Letting students know that that's really what police work is about, I think, is the greatest thing about this program, because the fun, exciting stuff happens 1% of the job.
People see students of all different, you know, races and background that are working with police officers. That makes a strong community. That makes people go, all right, we're all working together.
The passion from this job and the reward from this job is in making people smile and, you know, talking to a kid that's down in the dumps and, you know, helping a little old lady whose house is cold and she doesn't know why, lighting her pilot light on her furnace. You know, that's what we have to take out of this job. You know, those mean way more over a career, and they happen way more over a career than hitting those home runs and locking up the armed robber or the bank robber.
I went to Ferndale High School. My kids all went to Ferndale High School. The working relationship that I have with the school, I have turned into exactly that. Looking forward to mentoring kids, looking at some of the young men and young ladies for that matter that have, that aren't as, that don't have the same advantages that I have. And it's a passion to help.
And now that we've kind of got the word out there, we've had, I want to say about 15 to 20 students that have come to our high school that are 9th or 10th grade that said, "I'm coming because I want to be part of the early college in the junior year."
I find that I'm going to learn more from these kids in this program than they'll probably learn from me. So, I find it extremely interesting being able to do that.
I tell them, you know, we work in the, for the greatest residence and in the greatest city, and we should be proud and be happy of that. And, you know, it sounds kind of silly sometimes, but I really do believe that. And that's why I want to be involved in this and even increase the interest in Ferndale and Ferndale PD, because, you know, it's a great place to live.
Great. Want to see any questions on the program, and I do have an answer for you.
Just congratulations on the program. I know we've talked about it here. We approved it at this council. But exciting, wonderful video and exciting to kick it off this year. So, thanks for sharing it.
It's been great. Police Department has reached out and done a great work with the students that are part of that program. I'm sure you'll see them around a lot as they start doing a lot more work with the Police Department.
Excellent.
If I may through the chair, how are we going to publish that video? Or is it something shareable that we can help promote?
I'm sure Kara's got.
Kara will probably be able to, where is she?
We'll be.
Oh, there she is.
Yes, the plan will be to air it on Thursday at the conference. So, we'll be updating that, and then we will share it socially.
Excellent.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Great.
It does not increase any other businesses. So, if there's a business or landlord that disappears and that tax money disappears, then it does not affect anyone else. No one else's taxes can increase because of that.
Okay. But it negatively then impacts you, because you've lost that.
Not, it's a formula with the state.
Okay.
So, therefore, it has to do with the state foundation. Because the citizens have voted on this 4.1 million, if there's a certain percentage that doesn't exist, then the state has to make it up in state foundation.
Oh, okay, good.
So, it cannot have a negative impact on the school district. The only negative impact on the school district is if that non-homestead millage wasn't there.
Great. Thank you.
Blake, thank you for being here.
My pleasure.
Pleasure to see you. All right, we have a second presentation this evening, which is by the Eight Mile Boulevard Association. And Jason Towery from the Eight Mile Boulevard Association is here with us. Good evening.
Hey, how you doing? It's Jordan, but that's cool. I worked a lot of, no prob, I've worked a lot of jobs in past lives. And I worked for two brothers that owned a grocery store in Warren. The second brother, he'd come in once a quarter. He knew me as Jace for five years. So, I was like, if I ever screwed up, they'll just fire Jace and I'll be fine. So, in any case, thank you all for having me here tonight. I really appreciate it. I love doing these annual updates. It's one of the biggest opportunities we get out, a chance to come and get to see the elected officials that we work for every day. And so, what I'll do is I'll just kind of run through quickly a little bit about who we are, just for the new faces, just to kind of give you a sense of, you know, what is Eight MBA. And what we are is a regional nonprofit that was founded in 1993. See if I can learn how to use this. I'm a millennial. I should know this. So, basically, what we do is we were founded in 1993 to be sort of a lubricant of collaboration, if you will, between the public and private sector, as well as the city of Detroit and the suburbs and the three counties along Eight Mile Road, along with the state. So, our jurisdiction is I-275 to I-94, both sides of Eight Mile Road. So, that's 27 miles, 13 communities, three counties, and the state DOT, Department of Transportation, as well as about 1,700 properties along the corridor, 15 of which are on our board. So, just a couple stakeholders. And our main job is to, with all those folks at the table, to erase those borders that have sort of hindered Eight Mile and kind of contributed to these perception issues of it being this dividing line. So, what we do is we blur that away with tangible projects. So, a lot of that, and it focuses in three real realms. So, one is working with governments to help service delivery improve. So, for example, Lloyd's sitting right here, one of the things that we help with is coordinate the annual mowing of the medians all along the corridor, because essentially what you've got is when those borders literally come right into the median, it creates a challenge of who does what and where. And thanks to the communities really stepping up, and I have to say Ferndale has been one of the strongest. It's not just because I'm at your podium today, but you really have in terms of the quality of what you do down there. We, about six years ago, I believe, six or seven years ago, my predecessor worked with you guys to get this going. And with the same money that MDOT spent, MDOT would do it by themselves and got 12 mows and a couple litter pickups a year. With the same money and the communities getting involved, we've gone up to 24, and communities like yours do even more. So, obviously, it leads to a much more manicure appearance, really contributing to making the corridor look like a more beautiful place. And so, that's one of the ways we work with the governments. We also get involved in the communities. We help block clubs form. We'll serve as fiduciaries for their grants. We have a tool rental program. We'll help them rent out tools for their cleanups. We do our one cleanup once a year, first Saturday in May. So, we're calling for projects starting now for May. So, if you have some sites that you want us to come to. But when we're not out there, we'll lend you our tools. We've amassed quite an arsenal over the years. And so, we've supported since April about three dozen cleanups along the corridor, which is pretty wild. And so, the other thing that we do in addition to the community and the governments, is we work with businesses. So, we'll provide incentives to businesses to fix up their property. We'll provide grants to help fix things up. We'll provide design assistance. A lot of times, there's folks that want to invest, but they're not really sure how. So, we try to help fill those gaps. So, that's a lot of what we're doing there. But it's all just boiling down to connecting dots and facilitating collaboration so stuff just gets done. So, let's try this again. There we go. So, our core programs, I kind of alluded to those a little bit. So, our facade improvement program, our clean team campaign, which is sort of the corridor-wide grassroots blight removal, beautification, and really, it's about empowering neighborhoods to take control of their own destinies. A lot of times, you know, if you don't have, you know, Dan Gilbert in your backyard or things like that, you know, you're at a loss in terms of what resources are available to you. And more power to what's going on downtown, of course, but what we try to do is show people, you don't necessarily have to look at that and wonder why. There's a lot you can do right on your own. So, we help them out in that regard. And then the Leadership Luncheon is another signature program. That's sort of our annual fundraiser. And that sort of alludes to how we get our money. So, communities such as Ferndale, since 1993, have paid dues based on the size of their frontage. That contributes to about a third of our budget these days. The other third comes from the Leadership Luncheon, which grossed just shy of $100,000 last year. And then the other third comes from sponsorships and business member dues. So, businesses, individuals, block clubs, foundations can join the association, and those dues power all of our programs, and they keep the lights on, and they make sure I can eat something more than ramen. So, that kind of helps. So, in any sense, that's a little bit about who we are, what we do. Some of the highlights from this last year, this was a very, very busy year, a very exciting year. So, we transformed one of Eight Mile's most blighted sites at Eight Mile and 75 in Detroit, Nudson Park. Named for the guy that retooled the auto factories across America for wartime production, certainly didn't look that way. So, we started with really about 1,000 bucks and some string, and we were going to try to just fix it up. The fence has deteriorated. We're going to remove it. We ended up getting $25,000 from Tom's of Maine. The city of Detroit tripled the ante and threw 75,000 in, and so, $100,000 renovation. You should really drive by and take a look. And it started with, you can see that picture there, the top left corner, that gentleman in the very conveniently striped shirt for this presentation. He actually was the one mowing the grass, chasing away scrappers in the neighborhood, and that's really what started it. So, it was just a really, really incredible project. We had the five-year revenue high from the Leadership Luncheon. We had 750-plus people at Cobol Hall. We're going to be doing that again April 29th. So, keep your calendars open for that one. But that's a huge, huge deal in terms of raising our money for our programs. We installed the Detroit-Warren Connor Creek Greenway Crossing, sort of a nod to the shero that you guys have there on Livernoy. We have bike lanes and stripe crossing at Van Dyke, stamped concrete crosswalks that are bringing the Connor Creek Greenway from Detroit, connecting it to the larger regional system that Warren is going to bring north now. But also, $50,000 secured from the MEDC for more facades. We did two of those projects this year. And that program, for as little as grants as we used, we're really able to glean a lot of private. investment for the corridor. For example, with these, this past year, we gave out $15,000 in grants, got $40,000 in private investment in the corridor. So it's a pretty good return on the investment. And just in the last year, over $200,000 in grants and sponsorships raised for Eight Mile. We opened our new Detroit office. We were kind of rug surfing at Hagopian when the new Meyer at Ayton Woodward opened up, and we are proud to say we're back in an actual office environment. So that's always fun. And we completed a strategic plan update. And I have to, again, Ferndale really stepped up. A lot of great input from your folks in the Community Economic Development Department, Derek Delacorte and friends, really helped us create a solid plan. And what this is doing is, actually, for those who aren't really familiar with me, I actually became Executive Director last February. And so with a new ED, the board decided they wanted to take a look under the hood. What's going on in the world? What are we doing? And how does that interplay? And so what we did is we kind of decided we want to go to the next level. I sort of encouraged the board to define that. So this plan, Action 2018, it's on our website, that was really a really intense effort to define where are we going as an organization. And speaking of which, one project we're going to be pursuing, which will impact Ferndale potentially, is a Business Improvement District. We're looking at going from a slightly smaller than 27-mile segment of the corridor to concentrate investment and highlight key nodes. And one of the nodes that we're looking at right now is Livernoy to Ryan. We want it to be multi-jurisdictional. So we're doing feasibility investigation right now, talking to stakeholders, seeing if it's something they want, what value it can provide, and obviously, reaching out to the municipal partners as well. We actually secured $88,000 in subsidy to pay for the employee for a two-year period to study that for us. We're really excited about that. A few more planned projects. The Business Improvement District is one again. We have $20,000 still available from that MEDC grant for facades. So if there are candidates in Ferndale looking to fix up property, that would be one to send our way. We're going to be overhauling our median gardens. Those bad boys are about 19 years old, and a lot of the plants are starting to die out. And we're going to be updating our signs. You can see in the top left there, we created a new sponsorship opportunity. We've sold five of 11 so far. So we're going to start refacing those signs, sprucing up the gardens. And we're going to try to go with a more native configuration, something that's a little more natural, a little less costly to maintain, but trying to be environmentally friendly as well. We're going to have an initial draft of an Eight Mile master plan. So part of that action 2018 is to get an updated look at the corridor and where are our key nodes? Where are the investment areas that we want to attract? We want to expand our tool rental program. We're looking again, the April 29th, 2016. Leadership Luncheon's coming up, Clean the D, May 7th. And this is a big one that I'm really excited about. And Mayor Coulter, personally, I want to thank you for getting involved in this one, because it got MDOT really fired up to get involved. But there's a bridge that many of you might know at the state fairgrounds between Woodward and John R. And what we've tried to do over the past several months, we ended up getting a grant from Mercedes-Benz Financial Services, and that was what spurred this. And we were going to paint a mural on there. And what you find with a lot of it is a perfect example of some of the challenges you face on a corridor with a lot of borders. Because essentially, getting this project done is like untangling the worst bundle of power cords you've ever seen in your life. Because with that bridge, you've got, MDOT's responsible for the left half, Grand Trunk Railroad's responsible for the right half, and half of the middle pier. Wayne County pays for the lights. DTE installs the lights. And so there's a whole, just untangling that is a real behemoth project. But thanks to the mayor's involvement, actually, we were able to get MDOT to commission a study of the bridge. We found out that they've completely mapped out the ascent, and I'll be sharing this with you. I just got it this week. They were just out there at the end of September. They've mapped every piece of exposed rebar on the bridge, all the repairs that are needed. And so what we're going to do is start strategizing with MDOT and the railroad to figure out how we can get this funded, get it fixed up, get the lights turned back on. I know this is something that Lloyd's office has really worked on too. But we're going to untangle those power cords, and we want to really make that, we want to turn that into a really proud spot for the corridor and really highlight the cross connectivity. One of the things that we really like to do at Eight Mile is climb barriers like this. And this one's a big one. But I think, thanks to your help and thanks to MDOT, I think we're really going to be able to nail this out. So we're, all things go according to plan, which we know how often that happens. We're looking at possibly next fall, being able to really do something with this, and probably get the lights on before that. So that's just a few of our highlighted projects. I do want to give you a chance to ask some questions, if you have any. But if you ever want to look us up, eightmile.org, the word eight, the word mile.org, and call us at 313-366-3388. But with that, if you have any questions for me, I appreciate it.
Excellent. Does anyone have any questions of Jordan? Yes.
I do, thanks. You speak very quickly and covered an enormous amount of material in a small amount of time, which I appreciate. But for the folks at home and for clarity, what are the top three things that the city of Ferndale has tangibly benefited from membership in this association in the last 12 months? What do we tangibly get for our fees?
So I'd say the biggest thing, there are really two. So first, it's really about making sure things that are happening around the city are taking the city into account. So the bridge is probably the biggest one, I think. And that's something that's festered since 2012. That, you know, I remember we sent an initial email to MDOT asking about that bridge. We're still waiting for a response to that one. But when we were able to connect with the city and really start unraveling the issues behind the bridge, we've really started to see some project. And so the bird dogging of those projects and following up and chasing down the phone calls, that's one of the biggest things that we've done for Ferndale on this project there, but also the state fairgrounds, which is happening across the street. Now, I know at the Meyer project, there was a missed opportunity in terms of a mid-block crossing to connect with the neighborhoods. And so what we've really done very hard is worked with the developers and with the city and with the RTA to try to solve that opportunity. And right now, what we've done, we assembled a package for the developers that we gave to them and the city to go after a TAP grant, and we're willing to do all the legwork on that. So we've done all the groundwork there. But to do a TAP grant to leverage the fact that if there's going to be investment in that corridor, that can be leveraged very easily for overmatch for these funds, to pay for hog lights, to pay for crossings. So those are two projects right there that we've worked on that will impact Ferndale. And I'd say those are the largest ones.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments, too. For me, the Eight Mile Boulevard Association has always been, their value has been bringing together the leaders across the borders and so focusing on mutual interest and navigating the things that are moving in partnership together. And so I think, as a nonprofit, the amount of investment we pay for our dues is definitely a high return on investment. And I wanted to thank you, Jordan, particularly because Jordan has been very responsive to me. He gets a lot of phone calls from me and inquiries about Eight Mile, Livernoy. He also offered to serve as fiduciary for the Dale's Group as we applied for the Ferndale Community Foundation Grant, and that wasn't really in place before, and he made that happen. Unfortunately, we didn't get the grant, but we will next year, hopefully. And then I just, and he's also been helpful about the Eight Mile Woodward Bridge, just everything. So it's been very appreciative. My question for you is, as part of the MDOT bridge, I rode my bike on the sidewalks there over the weekend, and they're terrible. I hope that's part of the improvement plan for the actual painting of the, what's that called, viaduct. So I don't know if MDOT could possibly fix the broken sidewalk pieces. So that would be my request to them.
And to throw...
For this particular project.
Just a comment on that, too, as well. One of the things in terms of funding, we're really going to try to hold MDOT and the railroad to the coals, if you will, in terms of anything that they can't fund, we'll go after grants for, but primarily, it's their jurisdiction, their responsibility. And actually, I did look at the report before I came here. They rated the bridge poor, so that would make it priority status for funding. So one of the things we're going to do is really try to squeeze as much as we can in terms of getting that stuff funded. And absolutely, I've also walked those sidewalks, and they're uneven as being nice. So, yes.
When you say that the bridge was rated poor, do you mean safety poor or just physical attractiveness poor?
Well, my gut would say safety. I did only skim the report. It was several. It's a pretty thick report. I got it this week. And I was just kind of looking through as they classified it. And I noted that they just, they mentioned that they classified it poor. I didn't dive into the detail and see whether it was safety or aesthetics. I would argue, with my limited knowledge on it, of course, I would argue that it's both. I mean, whenever you have exposed rebar, the reinforced bar that holds the concrete together, whenever that's exposed, that travels up the wall. So, I mean, they mentioned in the repairs that when they go in there, they're going to have to, they're going to have to have actual new braces come up to hold parts of that up. So I'm guessing it's safety as well as aesthetics.
And Melanie, will you...
Nope, I'm good. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Jordan, I appreciate you coming. Eight Mile is important to Ferndale. It's important to our region. It's a critical avenue, and the development of it and the redevelopment of it is critical. And so we paid $2,500 in dues, which I hope the council will support tonight, and I assume we will. I think that we get a lot of bang for our buck, and it was helpful for you to point some of that out for us tonight. So thanks for coming by.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your partnership.
Thank you. All right, very good. The next item of business would be call to audience. This is the audience's member, audience members' opportunity to come and address council on any issue that's not on the agenda this evening, because you can speak to that when we get to that portion of the agenda. So you get three minutes to say whatever you would like. So come on up and give us your name and your address, and the three minutes is yours. Good evening.
Hi, I'm, can you guys hear me? Okay. I'm Crystal Paxmeyer, and I'm the publisher of the Oakland County 115 News, which is based here in Ferndale. And I tend to come up here about once a year because I carry on a tradition from a friend of mine named Dennis Hutton, who would get up at council and remind people that there's an election coming up and that people need to get out and vote. I will say that having expanded my website from just Ferndale to all of Oakland County, there is something that is sort of sad about Ferndale, and that is that we have very low voter turnout compared to other communities. And, which you wouldn't think, based on the engagement that we have online in our community groups, where people don't turn out to vote. So there are absentee ballots available, and the election is November 3rd. And I would love to be able to write on November 4th that Ferndale has the highest voter turnout in all of Oakland County. So I'm counting on everybody that watches this and is involved online to actually get out there and hold to that. Thank you.
Here, here. Thank you.
Oh, I should also say that if you want election information, there are interviews with the candidates on Oakland County 115. We are a nonpartisan and nonpartial source of information. There's the senior town hall that candidates had, as well as individual interviews, and a whole bunch of other information that you can look for on the election tabs on oc115.com. Thanks.
Awesome. Thanks, Crystal. Dennis would be proud. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Sharon Chess, and I'm representing the Ferndale Community Concert Band. And I'm here to tell our community that we are about ready to start our very first official concert season, with our first concert being held at the Ferndale High School Auditorium on November 1st at 3:00 PM. It is a free concert, but we will be asking for donations. This will be a full concert. The one that we did earlier in the season, or spring, was just to introduce you to the fact that we are amazing, and we continue to be so. We will hold an ensemble again here at our next city council meeting. There'll be four or five musicians that'll come in and display what you have to look forward to on that following Sunday. So the Community Concert Band concert, November 1st, 3:00, Ferndale High School, free. So we encourage you to come. Tell your friends, tell your family. Let's see if we can get the folks from our housing project over there, the elderly that are over there in the apartments, see if we can figure out a way to get them over for a nice Sunday afternoon concert. And our sponsorship package will soon be posted on our website. So if you want to donate money, have at it. We'll have a PayPal account and Visa and MasterCard set up. And our website is fcconcertband.org. So thank you. I hope to see you all there.
Excellent. Thank you, Sharon. Anyone else like to address council this evening? All right, seeing no one else, we'll move on to the next item of business, which is our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are those that council considers routine and we enact in one motion unless council removes something from the consent agenda. Let me read that now. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held September 28, 2015. Item B is the approval of a proclamation of appreciation for retiring crossing guard Thomas Wig. Item C is the approval of the purchase of three 2016 Ford Interceptor SUVs from Gorno Ford for a total amount of $78,660 from the drug forfeiture fund. Item D is the approval of the dues for the Eight Mile Boulevard Association totaling $2,500, as submitted by the city manager. Item E is the approval of a special event permit for the 2015 festive ale to be held this year on Saturday, November 21st, 2015, as detailed in the executive director's summary and with the consensus of the Special Events Committee contingent upon the listed conditions. Item F is the approval of a special event permit for the 2015 holiday hoof to be held also on Saturday, November 21st, 2015, as detailed in the event director's summary with the consensus of the Special Events Committee contingent upon the listed conditions. Item G is the approval of a special event permit for the 2015 Holiday Ice Festival to be held on Saturday, December 12th, 2015, as detailed in the event director's summary with the consensus of the Special Events Committee contingent upon the listed conditions. Item H is the approval of the bills and payrolls as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to the review of the council finance committee.
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Piana and moved by Martin. Now, questions?
I have the four questions. Through the chair, maybe April or maybe Lieutenant Peacock can answer this. Suburban Ford had an opportunity to bid on those SUVs. Did it come in too high?
You know, I don't know. All I have is the bid from Gorno. I'm the super self.
Lloyd, do you know?
Nobody had to follow up on it.
Yeah, I'm sure. They probably came in too high, but we can get back to it.
They would have been, I bet.
Okay, thank you. Nothing else?
I guess I have a question, and I know that our special event director is not here. So maybe April, and I'm sorry, it just occurs to me now, but we've added the language with the consensus of the Special Events Committee. So does that mean it hasn't been there yet?
And which one are you talking about? Which particular...
Well, all three of them, actually. For all three of the special event permits, it says, "as detailed in his summary and with the consensus of the Special Events Committee contingent upon the listed conditions."
More than likely, there's probably a final, but these are all active events that have been multiple years already. So more than likely, it's already been discussed. Do you guys, do you know if you've met on it?
Yep, they are.
Yep, you did. Okay, so...
They have been before the Special Events Committee?
Should have just asked them first.
Okay.
If I may through the chair, the way I read it is, because of just the way the commas fall, it's a little clumsy, but that the detailed events director's summary has the consensus with the Special Events Committee with these contingencies.
Thank you. Because we have not worded it like this, and it made me wonder if at the last minute, it had not been there yet. But it has been there. Awesome. Thank you. Other questions on the consent agenda, from the audience or of council? All right. If not, Marty, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Martin.
Yes.
Holika.
Yes.
Tiana.
Lennon.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on now to the regular agenda. Item A is the consideration to appoint Jennifer Bentley and Melissa DeSilva to the Housing Commission. Dan, do you want to introduce that item?
I'd be happy to. There's been a tremendous, really nothing going on at the Housing Commission lately, as everybody knows. And with my resignation and the resignation of a second commission member, there are currently two vacancies. And I cannot speak highly enough about how thrilled I am to have two candidates, the quality of Jennifer Bentley and Melissa DeSilva, to fill these roles. One comes from a very strong background with the Inspector General's Office, the other from health care and housing. And I'd like to give them the opportunity to briefly come up and introduce themselves, as well as the new commission president, Anne Heller is here. Everybody knows Anne, of course. But if there's questions for her as we move through this process. But the work at the Housing Commission continues. We're making these appointments very quickly, simply because we have spectacular candidates to fill these spots. And so we're able to keep moving.
Ladies, do you want to come on up and just introduce yourselves for a moment?
I don't think I mentioned, I may ask you to speak, so I'm really sorry about putting you on the spot.
Putting you on the spot. You look great.
Introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Bentley. And just a little background on myself, I work for the Office of Inspector General for the city of Detroit. So we investigate waste, abuse, fraud, or corruption. Prior to that, I am an attorney, and I did work civil litigation and also quite a bit in social security disability.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Melissa DeSilva. I'm COO of Bennett Health Centers. Bennett Health Centers is a federally qualified health center, AKA community health center. We've got six practice sites across the city of Detroit. One straddles the cities of Warren and Detroit on Eight Mile, and I'm happy that it'll be left. We are actually included in that stretch that's targeted, I guess, for a little bit more attention from the Eight Mile Boulevard Association. That's exciting for me. I've lived in Ferndale for about two and a quarter years. I love this city, and it is such an honor to be serving on the board of the Ferndale Housing Commission with Ms. Anne Heller, whom I've had the pleasure of working with, sort of from afar, for the last year and a half or so. And I thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you. And I don't know this woman. Who, what are you?
It's like I'm Sanger, yeah. Yes. Anne Heller, this time, is president of the Ferndale Housing Commission. I have to only echo what Dan said. We are very, very pleased that they chose to come forward and to work on the commission. Yes, it is... Uh, yes, it is absolutely true that we have done a great deal of work, uh, just in the short time that Dan and I have been on since May, but, uh, it is no secret there is a great deal of work, um, yet to do, and this is really going to help. I think people are going to be pretty happy with what they see, um, the commission doing, what they see develops from this, so, um, welcome, welcome, please.
Thanks, Anne.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, just in order to have additional comment.
Uh-huh.
I'd move to confirm the appointments of Jennifer Bentley to the regular seat of the Housing Commission vacated by Dan Martin for a term ending in May 5th, 2019, and Melissa DeSilva to the regular seat of the Housing Commission vacated by Ryan Hertz to a term ending May 5th, 2017.
Support.
All right. Moved by Martin and supported by Polika. Now, any comments, questions?
I'd just like to make one related comment and publicly thank Ryan Hertz for his service on the commission. Um, my experience with him over the last few months is that he is, uh, very compassionate to the cause and has been very helpful to Anne and I as we've, uh, and the rest of the commission as we've moved through the changes and responded to the HUD reports. Uh, he's the CEO of South Oakland Shelter and certainly has a full plate. Uh, he's a resident of Ferndale, and the, the choice of his, um, uh, resignation is based on the fact that he's likely moving out of Ferndale in the near future. Uh, and his, his wording to us is that, when I, we had the opening for me, he says, "This is what's going on in my life, and if you find two really great candidates, let me know, and I can accelerate my departure." And so I immediately called him after we interviewed both of these and said, "Guess what?" Uh, so I just want to publicly thank Ryan for his service.
Well, I want to thank you, Dan. You were a short timer on the board, but you accomplished a lot, and I want to make sure the residents understand, he's not resigning, uh, of his own volition. The HUD has told us that, uh, city elected officials are not, in their view, allowed to be on the board. We disagree, but rather than to get into a protracted court battle with that, Dan Magnan was really agreed to step off, uh, and so I want to thank you for all the work that you've done already.
Thanks, and I'm not going away. I'll still be there.
And I know that's true. And, and I'm also just really impressed. You know, a lot of us put our heads together and said, "Okay, how are we going to replace Dan on the committee, you know, on the commission? What are we going to do?" And I, I'm looking at Crystal Proxmyer, because we've had these discussions. She's been, if you don't know, you know, she, she really shined the light on this issue, uh, to begin with, uh, and really got this, the investigation and these changes started. Uh, but both of these women, women, uh, came to us through what we ask people to do all the time, which is fill out an application on our website and send it in and let us take a look at it. Uh, we didn't know either one of you two, uh, fine ladies before this evening, or at least before last week, uh, and, um, just so glad I got a chance to talk to you both on the phone last week, and just, uh, so glad that you applied. I'm just always so impressed at the talent pool that we don't even realize exists within our community if we just, you know, talk to each other. And so, uh, I want to encourage everyone that's listening out there. If you have an interest in any of the areas of the city, uh, that we serve, and you can go and find out all the different boards and commissions that are on our website. Literally, it does work to fill out an application and have us take a look at it, because both of these women are proof of that. So thank you for your willingness to serve.
Any other comments or questions? All right, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Council members Polika.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. Those appointments are adopted. Uh, moving on to regular agenda. Item B is the consideration of sign and display policy for city-owned property. And Dan, is that you this evening?
Mayor, I'd be happy to introduce that.
Okay.
This matter is before you. Last year, council will recall that it was an application with respect to a, uh, a citizen who wished to put a display up on city property, and the city utilized its special event policy in considering that particular application, and did allow for that individual to put a display, a temporary display, at, uh, the Kula Community Center. And, uh, the city administration believed that it was appropriate to, uh, consider a, uh, policy that would be, uh, more attuned, more directed as it relates to, uh, the placement of signs on city property, and to, uh, broach the issue as to whether or not, uh, council wished to regulate that issue. Uh, there are First Amendment issues associated with, uh, the right of citizens to, uh, have, uh, the ability to, uh, express themselves on traditional public forums, which would include streets, sidewalks, and, and public parks. Uh, this proposed policy before you this evening would create an additional limited, uh, public forum. Uh, as proposed, it would identify the front yard of the Kula Community Center, uh, for the, uh, ability for an individual, up to three, uh, applicants, to place on a temporary basis a sign in the front yard of the Kula Community Center. Uh, there are, uh, content-neutral, uh, uh, regulations and, and, uh, that is proposed in this policy, uh, which don't address the message at all, uh, but would address issues of important, uh, uh, public safety issues and, and public aesthetics, uh, and would, uh, limit the duration of any sign or display to not more than 30 days. And it proposes a scale or, uh, size associated with any applicant. Uh, and it does further require any, uh, an applicant to provide, uh, insurance and indemnification to the city, because as proposed, it's not for somebody just to gather, but rather to put a sign or display up on city property. This particular policy has been reviewed by the ordinance committee. Uh, there has been input by the city administration with respect to it. Uh, and if council has any questions regarding the scope of it, uh, or, or questions as it relates to the, the proposed policy, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Uh, other questions? A fact, I guess, and then a motion before we get into discussion.
No, Danny, this is, after we had our meeting, when the ordinance committee, uh, Polika and I, you did good work on it, and I really liked it. Semi-revived revision.
Does that mean you're moving it?
Yeah. Let me pull it up. You got it? You really pulled me out of the spot.
Me glasses, and, yes, yes, yes.
I, I move to approve the sign and display policy for public property.
Support.
All right. Been moved by Lennon and supported by Polika. I guess, may, one question that comes to mind is, um, and I, maybe of any of you that are on the ordinance committee, is why you, and, and maybe for Dan as well, because settling on three things as opposed to four, or five, or two, or, how, how did you arrive at that number? Um, and does that get you into legal issue if you limit the number?
Mayor, uh, on that point, the, the thought process, and I'll attempt to summarize, is there's three areas that were identified in the front of the Kula Community Center.
Right.
And, uh, it seemed to have a reasonable basis that a display would be able to fit on each of those three yard areas. Um, and that's where, where the number came from. Again, a, uh, this is a limited public forum. The city is allowed to, uh, have reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions. Uh, that number seemed reasonable. Whether that, uh, whether it could be adjusted one way or the other, certainly could, but it, the, the thought process was, there was, uh, three distinct areas at the front of the community center, which would, uh, accommodate, uh, at one time approximately three displays or signs.
Okay. It, it just strikes me, and I'm trying to remember, I thought there was a map, but I don't see it in this packet, but where those three areas were. But certainly one of the areas was sort of in front of the Kula Center along Livernoy, correct?
All three are in front.
Yeah, all three are. Um, they're right along Wood, uh, they're right along Livernoy. Um, but they're split between, um, there's sidewalks that run
Into the building.
In the middle of the property in front, so it kind of breaks it up into three sections. Um, they're not equal size, because, for example, the northern section will be a little bit smaller, because it has, um, the sign. It has the Kula Center's sign. The center section is kind of small. The biggest section is really the smallest section. However, we've restricted it, we've restricted the size of a display to be equal on each of those properties. So regardless of which section you choose, you'll, no one will have a bigger display area than another.
Okay.
And there were several things, if I may continue, Mayor.
Yes.
Um, there were several things that, that were important to me when I was working with Councilman Lennon and, um, staff on developing this ordinance, was I wanted to make sure that, um, there were, um, various, um, uh, types of displays included. I didn't want to restrict it to, um, like, one sign, or you could only have one element, because someone may come along and say that they have 10 or 11 items, um, that they want to display in the space. So we restricted it to a space rather than the size of an exact item. Um, also, I felt it was important, when we talked about the numbers, that more than one display be allowed, because if you're going to allow someone to, um, express one opinion, you should be able to allow someone to express an opposite or different opinion. Um, length of time. Length of time was important to me, because some events do last a month. Um, doesn't mean that someone has to take the whole month, you know, 30 days to, um, have their display, but at least they have their time. Uh, but one of the most important things was, um, renewal. Um, we require, the, the ordinance dictates that, um, an individual can't continue to renew their, um, request month after month after month. Someone else can renew for a similar display, um, for a following month. But we were worried that someone might come in and fill out 12 applications for a whole year to display something. And the, and the ordinance strictly states that an individual, you know, has to wait a certain amount of time before they can request, um, an application be, or, uh, a display be renewed on that property.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, oh, go ahead.
And Mayor, this is actually, it's actually not an ordinance, it's a, it's a policy of council. Council will have the ability to adjust it, should it wish to at some point.
Right. Cool. Well, no, I appreciate the work of the ordinance committee, and so I don't want to nitpick whether three is the right number. It struck me as a little restrictive, but your, your rationale seems logical to me, and so let's give that a try. It's better than what, it's, yes, yes. And, and it's better than where we were a year ago. I mean, I appreciate Rabbi, uh, Fineman bringing the, the menorah issue to us, because we realized we really didn't have a policy. So hopefully this will guide us as we, as we go through the holiday season and then any other season that somebody wants to, uh, use that space for free speech, so.
May I ask, this is a point of clarification. Has, has, uh, the rabbi requested again this year to do a similar display yet?
Yes, he has.
He has?
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Uh, well, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Council members Piana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Polika.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Now, moving on to regular agenda. Item C, our final regular agenda item, is a consideration, uh, of ordinance 1174, amending Chapter 6 of the Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 8 of Signs, Section 6 through 268 Appeals. Uh, Dan, is that you again?
Mayor, I'd be happy to do it.
Yes, appreciate it. Thank you.
This, uh, proposed ordinance amendment would, uh, modify the, uh, sign ordinance as it relates to appeals. And, uh, as currently, uh, configured, the, the current ordinance provides that appeals of a decision of the, uh, as it relates to a sign application goes to council. And that is, uh, somewhat unusual, and, uh, this proposed, uh, amendment would provide that, and, that the Board of Zoning Appeals would constitute the Sign Board of Appeals for purposes of any type of, uh, uh, appeal, of a, uh, decision as it relates to the sign ordinance. And, uh, the, uh, Board of Zoning Appeals already acts as a quasi-judicial board, uh, associated with, uh, implementing and interpreting, uh, appeals to the zoning ordinance, and, uh, so it's already familiar with, uh, that type of process. Uh, this has also, uh, been reviewed by the, uh, ordinance committee, and I believe unanimously is being recommended for consideration.
Excellent. All right. Are there questions or a motion?
I would like to move that we approve ordinance 1174, amending Chapter 6 Buildings and, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 7, Signs, Section 6-268 Appeals.
Except I believe it's Article 8.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It's in Roman numeral.
Article 8, it's Roman, yeah, I'm not very Roman. Article 8, Signs, Section 6-268 Appeals.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Piana. Now, any questions or discussion on this item?
Just clarification. This ordinance is for permanent sign. The previous one was for temporary signs. Just for, uh, audience clarification.
Through the chair, the, the previous one was as it relates to a, uh, application to place a sign on a, on a limited public forum, which is one location, the Kula Community Center. This is as it relates to the sign ordinance, which would be, uh, not only permanent signs, but, 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 uh, signs, uh, that would go at, at people's
Private property.
Build property, uh, within the city.
If I may expand.
I'm sorry?
This would remove the previous situation
Correct.
Of the Hill, or the, um, what road was that? Uh, the Service Drive, um, of 696.
The appeal would have gone to the Board of Zoning Appeals rather than council.
Yeah, instead of the Planning Commission, yeah. And I do believe, since, yeah, since.
Which is what raised this issue. This wasn't Greg Polika reading the Code of Ordinances, uh, during the night and finding yet another
No.
Odd thing, but this was an odd thing, as we discovered. Something like this normally would go to the zoning board.
Actually, this was, uh, Mr. Delacorte's, uh, finding, I believe.
Yeah, and as a former BZA member, ZBA, but what, I can't remember what we call it here.
BZA.
BZA, um, I, I think this is an appropriate move.
As do I. Yeah.
As a member of the BZA, I agree.
All right. If there's no other discussion, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Council members Lennon.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Polika.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That, uh, that item is adopted. Now, moving on to call to council, and I know our, uh, police chief isn't here, but Lieutenant Peetak is here representing him. Anything else from the police department this evening, sir?
Uh, sir.
All right. Thank you for being here. Derek, anything from Community and Economic Development this evening?
Uh, nothing additionally.
All right. Uh, Jill, anything from the Recreation Department? Pull to Jenny.
I just had a couple of quick announcements. Um, as many of you know, this past Saturday was our annual Fall Festival. Um, so I have a couple of thank yous. First, I'd like to thank not only my staff, but DBW's staff. They did a great job, although we really appreciate all of their hard work in helping, um, prepare for the event and lead up to that day. Um, DBW was out there giving hayrides, and they were, they were busy nonstop. So they did a great job with that. Um, I'd like to thank our sponsors, the Ferndale Public Schools, Wetmore's, and, um, the library, and our, also our presenting sponsor, Garden Fresh. Um, I'd like to thank all of our volunteers that came out. We certainly could not pull that off way without them, so we appreciate their help as well. Um, the Ferndale Senior Group for putting on a wonderful bake sale, and also some of them helped out in other areas. Um, so we appreciate all of their, their help as well. Um, and lastly, to everyone that attended. It was so great to see so many people out there enjoying themselves. Um, you know, they're the reason that we do what we do, so we thank you, everyone that attended. Um, coming up on Thursday, October 15th, is our annual spaghetti dinner. Um, our Ferndale Senior Group again puts a lot of, um, hard work into, to cooking and putting on a great meal. Um, so please join us, uh, from 5 to 7 at the Kula Center, um, this Thursday. great meal, so please join us from 5 to 7 at the Koolak Center this Thursday. And lastly, for those interested in obtaining a dog park membership, as you may know, attending a dog safety class is part of the membership. We just added two more October dates. Saturday, October 24th, we will be doing two back-to-back classes. One at 9:30, and then one at 10:45 for those interested in getting that class taken care of before FAB, they'll need their key FAB on November 1st. And all that information will be on our website, ferndalemi.gov. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks, Jill. Jenny, anything from HR Department this evening?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just have one quick announcement today. I wanted to introduce Justin Girolando, who has been hired as our payroll and retirees' coordinator.
Oh.
He started today, so we're kind of throwing him right out there. Justin comes to us with over 10 years of hospitality management and customer service experience, and most recently, a few years of direct payroll, payroll experience with retirees. And so we thought it'd be great for him to be introduced to our retiree population last year.
Excellent. And thanks for saying he wasn't, you're not throwing him into the lion's den, we're friendlier than that.
Thank you so much, Council, for this great opportunity, and my new boss, Ms. Koolak. It's a, it's a great honor to be working for the city. I want to speak directly to the current city workers and retirees. My job is to work for you. I look, really look forward to, you know, my experience, showing it with, with everything that goes along with it, and.
I know.
I'm sorry. No, and I, you know, I really want to just make my face known that, you know, when you call in, you have issues, that you're going to be talking to me, and that's what I'm here for. If anybody wants to get ahold of me personally, it's area code 248-546-2372, and thank you again so much.
Awesome. Welcome aboard, Justin. Appreciate it. Thank you. You guys didn't have presentations, but anything from the chamber or the DDA that you want to share with us this evening?
Just really quick, this Thursday, October 15th, Downtown Ferndale goes to the dogs again. Fido's Ferndale comes to town, so there's plenty, it's from 5 to 9, so there's plenty of time to either go to Fido, then go to the spaghetti dinner, or go to the spaghetti dinner, then come to Fido, but if you do that, you should probably bring me some spaghetti with you. And obviously, Ashley's here with me, and the DDA and the chamber have teamed up on holiday hoof this year, so that is, like we said, the 21st of November, and we're really excited that it's going to be a straight 5K, but we've got all sorts of fun things planned, so check it all out. All the details are always on our website, downtownferndale.com.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. Lloyd, anything from DPW this evening?
Just a quick announcement, council's aware that DPW has been working on Fair Park, and we also have been working on Marie Park. We expect to have both those parks completed prior to the Thanksgiving Day holiday. Fair Park is, is, there's a number of people, a number of pieces of equipment, so it's a major project going on there, and it's progressing nicely. In addition to that, it's that time of year again for leaf pickup. Beginning in Monday, we will have two trucks out. It should be light pickup based upon the amount of leaves that are on the ground so far, but we will have one truck on the east side, one truck on the west side surveying, and then as the leaf drop becomes more significant, we will add additional man-hours all the way up to when we're in full swing, you know, six days a week, 12 hours a day. And so I look forward to, at the next council meeting, providing information that Kara is developing for a leaf pickup page, and stay tuned.
Excellent. Thank you. Joe, anything from your neck of the woods this evening?
Yes, Council, I did want to make an announcement, that I'm happy to inform you that AT&amp;T has committed a port date, so we will be walking into November with a new phone system. So we, I want to inform residents right now that the port date is scheduled for October 30th. That will impact your ability to reach city offices. 911 will still be available, and we will be prioritizing making sure that public safety numbers are ported first successfully up, as well as the court. We do understand how important it is that you maintain those communications. I'll use this opportunity also to inform residents that each building will have its own auto attendant. I can acknowledge that there's been some frustration from residents over the years and issues getting to the right destination that they were trying to get to. The benefit of this system is that we are now managing it, so if there's an issue with call routing, trying to get to someone in the city, we can hear your complaint, and we can make the address, we can dress the complaint immediately because we have now the power to do so internally. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to take them.
May I through the chair?
Yes, please.
This will equally impact police and fire non-emergency lines?
Yes, but we are working on a plan to ensure those are going to be up, and I will have an update prior to the next council meeting, but I certainly don't want to promise that at the moment, but that is a priority for us.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good. Thanks, Joe. Kara, anything from community engagement?
Hello.
Hello.
I've got all sorts of notes. So first, just to add on to what Lloyd said earlier, we do have a page set up on Facebook. It's actually an event page, and it is titled Curbside Leaf Pickup. What we hope, we're going to launch it Thursday morning, I believe it goes out, what we hope is that people will actually click to attend the event, and then that's where we can push all of our information, because we think it might overwhelm our social media accounts to have constant updates. But Lloyd and I are going to work really closely, I'm going to be in touch with his team regularly, they're going to let me know where they're at, if there've been delays, things like that, so that I can constantly have a stream of, of information out, and then we can also, hopefully anyway, get a better handle on how many questions, where those questions are coming from, in general, where the confusions are in the communications, things like that. So it's a trial, we'll see how it goes. I will tell you, we have a Bit.ly URL set up for it, because Facebook URLs can be messy. It's bit.ly/ferndale-leaf. So it's easy to get to, and we will be sharing it across all of our channels in just a couple of days, so stay tuned for that. So also, in other news, we are excited to say that tomorrow, the city will be launching a new online site. It's called Ferndale Exchange. This is a social media application and site, and it is, it comes from, I don't know if it's the actual company name, it's called My Sidewalk. My Sidewalk's actual goal is to provide a way for residents to improve their relationship to the things they love about the place they live, by making it easier for them to be part of the process that manages it. So, this new site, which people can get to at ferndale-exchange.org, is going to provide a direct opportunity for us to talk to residents about the issues that impact the planning and development and improvement in Ferndale. Parks, the business district, new developments, neighborhoods, et cetera. It's also going to allow residents to speak directly to us, Derek and his department and all of us, and tell us what the needs are. So, do you want to bring a little bit of background about where, how this site came to be?
It started as a conversation, probably a year or more ago with Joe, about the site and how to engage the residents in an ongoing dialogue and have some measurables out of it. We all know the conversations that take place on Facebook and, and uncontrolled or unmeasurable formats on the web. This is an attempt, one to bring them back to the city and have a dialogue about, and it's an extension of, of what we did with the Ferndale Moves Plan, in which we decided to have online shretts instead of doing the standard town hall, and it's a continuation and growth of that process. For us and our department, it started with the Master Landry's Plan approval and the contract approval that was done a few, about a month or two ago at, at City Council. And we started looking at ways to engage the public about the Master Landry's Plan that was different from the standard town hall format, which we've been having less and less success with across the board, in, in our field and in with municipal governance as well. So we're trying this tool, we've worked very hard to kind of get it up and running, we would not have been able to do it without Kara's help and her being here, it's not something we would have been able to attempt. But it's an, an attempt to, at least for this project and for everything we do across the board, to try to push residents back to this site, to see updates. We can do surveys with it, it keeps a record of the data and the responses, and provides us measurables on topics for everything we do. So, if you have any thoughts, if there's anything you want to know, and any ways you want to engage the residents, contact Kara and I, and, and hopefully we can turn that into some kind of content for this. We hope it works, we don't know. Some municipalities and regional organizations have used it in limited fashion before, but we are going to try to integrate this wholly into this planning process, and then hopefully as a continuing, as a continuing way to measure and follow projects as they move forward. So I think it takes off tomorrow, and we'll see how it goes.
It does. We have our launch tomorrow morning. We are really excited about the opportunities this provides, because like Derek said, there's a lot more conversations happening on the forums, and it's becoming increasingly common that Heather Coleman Voss, one of the creators of the forum, receives messages saying, what can you do to help the trash pick up on my street, or how can you improve, you know, things like that, which she then forwards to me. So I think there's actually some confusion sometimes about, you know, there's so many avenues for discussion on social media, they, people think that we are hearing, but we're not hearing. So this, this really is going to be a positive avenue, and we're going to give it our all. We're going to do everything we can in the next year. We've got a really robust content calendar for the next three months. We're going to be launching tomorrow with questions about, I'm trying to remember, I think we're going to be talking about the best hours for the dog park, and then immediately after with some development questions about downtown. Justin Lyons came up with some great ideas, we've been working really closely with the, the team behind the site to help come up with content that will be good for our community, but will also have a lot of engagement. You will see it come up across tomorrow. This is our fabulous cool logo that we decided on after a lot of input from our community, so that's great, I think people are already excited about it.
Great.
We have had a couple people say, one more social media site, and so I just want to address that right off the bat. It, you can access it right from your own Facebook account, so when you get to this page, you can sign on and log in with your Facebook, and it makes life easier, so you don't have to create a whole new profile. It's helpful to us if you do, because we can then geo-target content directly to where you live, but if you don't want to, it's easy enough not to. And we'll be constantly pushing the questions from this new site out across our Facebook and Twitter, so that people can easily access it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Through the chair, may I ask some questions?
Of course.
A couple things, I, I love this idea, I think it's fantastic. Where I am unclear on your presentation is how you think this reduces confusion, because not to fall into the one more social media side bucket, I think it's great that I can use one sign on, but I still can't differentiate this from the forum, because I'm on Facebook there too, or the fabulous forum, or all the other forums. You know, I, I agree, there are many channels, most of which we don't control, but I, in your communications rollout, I'm just not certain where the reduction in confusion is, so I would, I just spend some time thinking about that, and look, I'm not asking you for answers today.
No.
I think it's part of a learning process in the ongoing rollout.
It's, it's absolutely a factor in this. Anytime we add something new, we have to do that with a lot of thought and consideration, because like you said, there are already so many channels out there. We are going to pair this with a really coordinated, non-social media rollout as well. We've got invitation and press release to the media. We're also going to be doing a print, a print and kind of like an on-the-ground marketing rollout, so stencils with sidewalk chalks around town, postcards that we can put in the businesses, and allow people to kind of look at this in a different way. It's also why we came up with a specialized logo for this.
I agree, I don't mean to interrupt you, I'm sorry, but I think that the, just not seeing the logo before, or candidly even seeing the feedback for it, I think what the forum suffers from sometimes is it turns into a garage sale, and calling the Ferndale Exchange may drive people to buy, sell, or trade, or try to do that, I think that's what the site is for, so, you know, again, in your clarity of messaging, we, we want to take a look at that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, and for us, unlike other social media outlets, and we've only shown a little bit of it today, what we can do is, is the analytics, the survey work, the, the interactive mapping, visual preference surveys, and things that are normally done and associated with a town hall or shrup process, we can control and manage all that, and have measurable content and public input for our planning process out of this where we can't with other social media sites. We're concerned about getting it confused, but we hope what we're going to do is get more participation out of this than we've seen from those standardized town hall forums.
Sure. No, I, I agree, that across the board, the town halls have been worse and worse attended. I guess my last question is, and again, if you need to clarify later, that's fine, in a town that's four square miles, what does geo-targeting get you? Like, what are you hoping to walk away from?
Well, it, it depends on the issue. Primarily, we probably won't be geo-targeting, however, if there is a, an issue that directly affects a, a certain street or neighborhood.
Okay.
You know, we've, we've heard rumblings about one particular park, and we want to talk to the residents ran around there, it gives us the opportunity to do that. Anybody can still weigh in on those issues, but rather than constantly crowd the feed with questions, if we only kind of want to hear from merchants in the downtown business, or people in a specific neighborhood, it gives us that chance.
We also hope to, to get people and, and encourage them to let us know where they're from right now, when we get comments, especially online on our Facebook page. A lot of times, we don't know if they're Ferndale residents or not. This allows us to separate out, hopefully, comments that are coming from internal to the city and maybe even external.
That's fair. And what's the expense of this?
We got a year license for free.
Oh, great.
So I'm sure, I'm sure if we decide to continue this, after the fact, there'll be a fee associated with it, but we're going to take a year, find out if it has any value, we hope to share it with all the departments, and then sit back and revisit it at the end of the year and see if it's something we want to continue.
Great, thank you.
Marnie, anything from the clerk's office?
Actually, I, well, I just wanted to kind of continue the conversation Councilman Martin started with the social media. I think with this rollout, it, it's important that we then communicate with these forums, these Facebook forum groups, that they need, these leaders need to start directing people to this site, because I think going forward, a lot of people just assume that, you know, by making a comment on the forum, the fabulous forum, et cetera, that they're communicating with the city, because we have responded a lot off of those sites.
I think Kara has a comment to that.
I would like to add, Justin Lyons and I met with Heather Coleman Voss and Jim Poole virtually last week, and then by extension, Heather had a meeting with her moderators. So they understand the site now, they know what all the goals are, and they're, we want to try not to really push it too heavy, but what we want is for her moderators to say, this looks like a really good issue that could go here, and you can talk directly to the city and get information back. And so that's going to be what they do for the next year, while we roll this out.
Are you going to employ that same strategy with Matt at the fabulous forum, or?
We are in the process of deciding which forums right now make the most sense.
Okay.
And we, we're now up to seven altogether, so.
Seriously?
Yeah, I know, they, they just keep coming up, so more on that later.
Hard to keep up. Okay.
And if I may, I just, I just think where we started with, with the city's communications, I think when we had the power outage, when we first got on, we started working together on council, there was no social media outlet that the city had in which to push information about the power outage, and the mayor and I used our own social media accounts with the Ferndale Patch, and Crystal Proxmire were really helpful in getting out the word, so, I don't know, how long ago was that, four years ago?
Just, yeah, only four years ago.
Only four years ago, we had not.
Communication technology terms, that was a lifetime ago.
Yeah, and so, in four years, we've gone to really ramping up our communications, and, and I think what you're trying to do here is really important, particularly not only for engaging our residents in a new way, which we've always been wanting to explore, but also really moving forward aggressively on, you know, sort of data-driven results and looking at the quality of data coming in to help us make better decisions on behalf of the residents. And so I know this is a trial, and, you know, a pilot program, but I think it's one that we need to do. And so you've got my support, and I look forward to seeing what results we, we get over the next couple of weeks, or months.
Thank you so much. Yes, months, thank you so much.
I have one, just one more thing, and it's just feedback. I, I'm very supportive as well. I think in the future, something like this should be an agenda item though, with documentation that backs us up, versus a departmental update where we're all kind of taken aback and, I, I even have more questions now. So something, because this is big to me, and it's something in the future, we should, if we roll out, we should roll it out as an agenda item, please.
Good, yes, absolutely. I'd be happy to add it as an agenda item in the coming weeks, and we can give an update about where we are so far and give you some more background information.
That'd be great, thank you.
Now, Marnie, anything from the clerk's office? Yes. An election coming up, don't we?
Sure, I would like to thank Crystal for her nice presentation about exactly what I want to talk about. Absentee ballots are available up through October 31st. We will be in the office on Saturday, October 31st, distributing absentee ballots until 2:00 p.m. And vote, low voter turnout is very much an issue in these local elections. As I mentioned before, we have a election task force, a group of concerned citizens that we've been working with, and this is one of the items that we've been trying to figure out how to improve. So we have some cute ideas, we're working with Kara and hoping to come up with some social media campaigns to really kind of build on our show us your sticker campaign from the May election, to really get people more interested and to see, you know, see more activity in voting. And just to find a way to relate how important local politics are. I mean, it's really, everybody wants to vote for the president, but people don't see that on a day-to-day basis, the people that govern your day-to-day life are your local politicians, and it's so much more important to vote for your local issues and your local proposals, so we really are encouraging everyone to get out and vote this November 3rd. As I said, absentee ballots are available, we're here, if you have any questions, please contact clerk's office. We're here. If you have any questions, please contact the clerk's office. But get out and vote.
Excellent. April, anything else from the city manager's office this evening?
No, just I will be contacting city council at that time again for goal setting. We'll be doing a mini-session, again, like we do every other year, the big. This is, you really need help. I know you do. But we're trying to do that in November. So I will be working with city council this week to firm up a date. It'll just be a one night. We can get it done in a couple hours. I was actually considering doing it prior to a council meeting, but I think we need just a little bit longer than that. So I will reach out to all of you for a date, and we'll be in touch this week.
All right. Dan, anything else from the...?
Nothing further, Mary.
All right. Councilman Martin?
I have a number of things people have contacted me to help relate. The first is this Wednesday at 11:00 A.M., the seniors host a town hall with your mayor. This is not an election event. This is talking about what's going on in the city. They do it every year, and they generously open it up to the public. So if you're interested, Kulik Center, 11:00 A.M. And you can put the mayor on the spot and ask him great questions. But it's always a really informative session. So that's, I think, pretty great. So Thursday, after you eat your spaghetti and after you take care of your dogs at Fido Does Ferndale, the Cats, not to be outdone, is having a fundraiser on Friday for the Cats Rule Ferndale fundraiser for the Ferndale Cat Shelter. This is an evening event at 8:00 P.M. It's at Soho. There's no cover, but they are taking donations for the Ferndale Cat Shelter. And I'm assuming it's not okay to bring your cat to that, but you can check out the website to verify that. On Sunday, for Ferndale Youth Assistance is the Ferndale Bowl-a-thon. It's from one to four at Luxury Lanes. If you're interested in forming a team, those teams are due to Ferndale Youth Assistance by the fourteenth. But this is a fundraiser. It's a lot of fun. Ferndale Youth Assistance does tremendous work working with at-risk kids. And as far as city events, that's it. I'm going to add a personal one though, because it is campaign season. Tomorrow night at 6:00 o'clock, I'm having a meet and greet at the Candlewick Shop. This is not a fundraiser. No one will ask anyone for money. But talk about one of the neatest retail shops that we've got in downtown Ferndale. We'll have cookies and punch and a little bit of a Halloween theme going on there. But calm down, talk about what your concerns are, dream with us, and just have a great conversation and camaraderie in this kind of Dan Martin for City Council Meet the Candidate Forum. So all are welcome. That's it. I'm done.
All right. Councilman Leonard?
I have nothing, other than the Dog Park ceremony this afternoon was fabulous. Lloyd and Tru did a lot of the job over there. I had to opt in with GPW. A nice speech by the mayor, too.
Is that right?
You can tell it was lesson season.
What do I do there?
Otherwise, your speeches are really bad.
Your speeches are horrible.
Councilman Pollock?
I just have actually the same thing. Thank you, everybody, to, that came out to the Dog Park grand opening, ribbon cutting. A lot of people, a lot of dogs. But it was nice. It was kind of a crummy day, most of the day, and all of a sudden, the skies, clouds parted, and the sun came out. It was a beautiful hour. So that's all I have.
Councilwoman Piano?
Sure. Earlier this year, we helped, I helped start the Ferndale Small Business Collaborative, which is the city, the school district, library, DDA, chamber, and the Oakland County, Michigan Works Office to come together to talk about how can we better serve our small businesses throughout our city. And we've been working on a couple initiatives. And one of these initiatives is to start the Small Business Council, which I'm excited to announce will launch, and it's an inaugural meeting this Thursday. And the Small Business Council is an advisory group of single business owners, sidewalk-level businesses, retailers, restaurants, or services who are located throughout the city. So not only in our downtown, but on Liver Norton and Hilton and other major commerce corridors. And the Small Business Council, what we're trying to do is connect small businesses to existing and emerging business programs. We would like them to help shape local policy for the city and also create shared opportunities and resources by helping provide a network in which our Ferndale-based retailers can learn from another. In particular, we have many stores or businesses who are opening up second shops in Detroit, like Eight Degrees Play-Doh. And I think this is all about economic, economic growth and economic gardening, as they call it, is really nurturing your entrepreneurs in your communities so that they can be, grow and expand, and sometimes, enter into other communities for second concept stores. So right now, this Small Business Council is starting small, and we'll see where this group will take us. Everybody on council is invited. I think, though, we can only have two. Two, otherwise, we'll have a quorum, and it will come see me,